On a 5% increase for each. Please note that all agencies that are members of CalPERS are required to ensure that pay schedules are publicly adopted and available as prescribed by the California Code of Regulations. In addition, in compliance with CalPERS regulations, salary increases for highly compensated employees must be presented orally in a public forum, and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we move to the comments that we have on this side?
We have no comments for C3. It's just for C7.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Is there any feedback or questions from colleagues? Thank you so much for the presentation.
So you all would like me to say for the record, I, hold on. Okay, I have a conflict of interest on C7 due to the proximity of my residence to the project site, but I am, I've been advised I do not need to leave the dais, so I'm going to hang out, but would like to just share that for the public awareness, and I will not be voting on this, and our city attorney wants to.
Yeah, I'll just.
Thank you.
Mayor, I also have a conflict of interest due to the proximity of my residence, so I will not be voting on this one as well.
All right, so we can go to the speakers unless there's anything from colleagues? Okay, go from the speakers.
Thank you. We have three speakers signed up. Emily Fisher, Judy Sherman, and Joshua Idrah.
My print broke, and because of my illness, I'm actually having a hard time breathing right now. What I wanted to say was the other, the other packet that I did just first here was they are excerpts from the original general plan. I strongly encourage the present future, and I'm only going to read you out of the land use element, the goal, and that is residential neighborhoods that offer residents the qualities of a peaceful small-town environment. Culver City delivers strength and stability from its true established single-family neighborhoods or multifamily planned developments. These neighborhoods have strong identities, consistent quality of development, and will undergo physical change very gradually over the next 20 years. Also, in the original general plan was an estimate for what the population would be at this time, and it does not even get near it. It was 42,000 people, and I believe we're under 40,000. So all of these buildings that you're doing now, like a cent of low-income apartments, you are trading off 50 parking spaces for 428. And all of those things, including the outdoor cafes, the trees that are going to be gone, all of this is stuff that you are not taking into consideration when you approve of things. Yes, someday the trees will be mature, but it is only protected by green space, and everything you are approving is removing green space, open space, all in the general plan. I'm going to end up copying this, and I'll send an addendum email to each of you so that I don't take up your time tonight, but you need to know what the city founders planned for this city.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Judy Sherman. Judy, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
The good work that you've done. Should I start? Okay. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the good work that you have done, such as the Mobile Crisis Unit. However, you are forgetting Fox Hills, and I do want to acknowledge the previous speaker. She made some really good points. Your total lack of advocacy, fair play, and critical thinking skills on behalf of Fox Hills were on full display at the November 11th. You were quite aware of the issue of the high-density designation on the South Side of Slauson, which you all knew would result in developing, in flocking, in having developers flock there, and indeed, they did. Your blatant ignoring of this issue was very evident by never putting it on the City Council agenda. Reject the adoption of the ordinance amending the general plan use and zoning that would allow the comprehensive plan for this unit to proceed by approving this project and not looking at the big picture of the multiple projects being proposed is neglecting your responsibility to the Fox Hill community. Specific to this project, Mr. Mendeville stated that the environmental impact of this project was unknown, and yet you approved it. Mr. O'Brien, back in May 2023, you, Supuza, you both had on record of supporting equitable distribution of this housing the city has to build. Mr. Vera, you have also expressed concern about development in Fox Hills. These positions have been given merely lip service. Mr. Erickson, at least you do not give lip service, which does not try to mislead your feelings about development in Fox Hills. Your sentiments, however, are nothing to be proud of when it comes to Fox Hills. Ms. McMoran and Mr. Puzo, your stunt of recusing yourselves from participating in the 5,700 Olympic da Vinci's the sitting City Council may have, since some of their campaign funding came from developers. Should they have recused themselves too? You are all complicit in acting unfairly in this manner and ignoring the central issue of the 100 units per acre, which has led to these proposals to begin with. In particular, Ms. McMoran and Mr. Vera, since you have won another term, you have plenty of political capital to spend, and it needs to be spent now on Fox Hills. You only see in our quality of life. And also kudos to Mr. Copy. In terms of the planning commission, I have sent you all an email. Your planning commission is very problematic on a lot of levels, and I will give you more details in another email. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Joshua M. Idrah.
Hi, Culver City Council. Thanks for letting me speak. Since the idea of climate change is questionable, we also don't have to remove single-family zoning, as spread-out housing, single-family zoning allows for easier sanitation systems, thus better health. Single-family zoning is also a good source of wealth creation for people of various backgrounds. My neighbors include Americans who are. Single-family zoning is also good for social cohesion as well, and I'll cede my time.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for item C7.
Thank you. So can we have a motion for 1 through 6 and C through 9? 8 through 9, did I say that right? And then we'll do C7 separately.
Need verbal?
No, actually, I got it this time. Thank you.
Great.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, a second by Councilmember Vera, to approve 9 and C8. Please vote. The motion passes unanimously.
Attorney, we just don't vote, or do we abstain? Or we just?
Yes, just, I would turn the procedure for the call of the motion over to the Vice Mayor, and then, yeah, you just don't vote as if you're not sitting there, so it's not an abstention.
Okay, wonderful. Vice Mayor?
We have a motion, well, I moved. Do we have a second?
Yes, we have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien to adopt the ordinance amending the Culver City general plan land-to-use and zoning maps, approving ongoing construction of the project at 5,700 Hanum Avenue. Please vote. All members who are voting have voted, and that motion passes. Three ayes with two abstains.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving into our action items, we are going to go to A1, election results.
The reason why we're all here. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. We are here tonight to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Culver City, California, certifying and reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 5th. I'm with you, just because it's pretty. There is the certificate of the election that we received that will be attached to our resolution, signed by the registrar reporter and county clerk. And at the end of the 30-day canvas, we have the results, which are available on our website, The results show for the three council members' seats, the top three have become council members again. That's Albert Vera, Yasmini Mani-McMoran, and Brian Bubba Fish. So congratulations to all of them. Each of the members are elected to a full term of four years, and we've prepared a resolution to declare the results, and I just wanted to share with you, it was a wonderful turnout. We had over 80% of the registered voters. And finally, I just wanted to say that it was also very interesting. We had over 80% of the people who did vote, vote by mail. So that was an interesting, unique turnout for us. That was great. With these results, we adopt this resolution, and we have a motion by Councilmember Erickson, and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. Please vote. The election results are now certified, and the results are set by resolution.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, it's time for, or do we have any comments on A1? I don't, just want to make sure. Okay, wonderful. So with that being declared, we're going to move on to A2, departure of outgoing members. So it is the time for the departure of outgoing member. Eric?
Actually, we would like to turn this over to Councilmember Erickson.
Okay.
To have an opportunity to make some final remarks as council member after over eight years.
Well, yeah, so I'm looking at the run sheet here, and it actually starts with.
All right, Councilmember Vera.
I don't know if I want to or not, Yoran, but.
I know. It says so.
Yoran, you, this is sad for me. I mean, as well as the community, I'm really going to miss your quirkiness. I'm going to miss your pen clicking and your glasses, whatever else you're doing there. I am bored, and I know our friendship will continue, but you are going to be sorely missed. You were mayor during probably the most difficult time in the city, although your mayorship was cut short because of circumstances I'm not going to get into. However, you volumes how you stepped up and really supported local businesses and ensured that they thrived through some of the most difficult times. I personally appreciate your leadership, and more importantly, your friendship. I don't know if Britta's going to be real happy that you're around the house all the time now, but if I tell everybody outgoing, I always have room in the store for you. We'll get attention to the city, your love and your passion, and your guidance. You'll be definitely missed here on board. Thank you.
You're in service. I've learned a lot about you and how you lead in the past two years. We've had some feisty exchanges, but we've also shared some laughs. I wish you the best in the next chapter of your life. Now that you will have some free time, I hope you find something that fulfills you and makes you happy, and maybe you can focus full-time.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
I wish I could imitate Yoran. I think it begins with, yeah. I actually didn't really know Yoran that well until really I started campaigning for office in Jesper. And for those of you who don't know about Feed Culver, it was mostly the brainchild of Yoran to bring community members together to help assist other community members who are in need. A lot of people lost their jobs. We saw spikes in homelessness, as well as together raise some funds, got some partners, and not only were able to help convert what was Grace Diner, once a week, you know, kitchen for those who are food insecure, into a five-day-a-week, while helping the small businesses, the restaurants, anyone who was willing and able to provide food, we paid for it through the funds raised. And it was a really important program. It's still ongoing. It's not as, it's not, and I really appreciate that, and it does take leadership, and that has, you know, that's something that you can, it's a substanti, substantiable, quantifiable benefit that it provided to a lot of people, and I really appreciate that leadership. And then on council. Rissled a lot of people, and, but, not that he doesn't have a heart. He does have a big heart, but he doesn't lead with his heart. He really sticks to, you know, the basic functions of the city, and I think it's important to have that sober perspective. I hope I can have that. I tend to lead with my heart a lot, but it is really important that we make sure that we, we do, you know, take care of the basic functions first and make sure that we're safe, I think, in a budget-strained time, which is seemingly always. Yoran kept his eye on that, and it's really important. So I think it's going to be a challenge for us to maintain that to a degree as we move forward, and I really thank you for all that and all your.
Welcome, Councilmember Erickson. I am very grateful to your dedicated service to our beloved city, to countless LA County bodies and other governing boards. You have a passion that consistently, consistently shine through, so we are grateful for that. I wish you much joy and renewed purpose in this next phase of your life, and I'm sure you won't be far, so don't be a stranger. Thank you so much for your service.
Glasses now. Albert. Dear colleagues, city staff, and friends, it's been my honor and pleasure to serve you as a member of the City Council over the past eight years and some months. My wife and son are friendly neighborhoods and safety. Culver City will always be home, and it holds a special place in my heart. When I first took office, I did so with a commitment to be a voice for the middle road, common sense, silent majority. Over the past years, I have had the privilege of working alongside dedicated individuals and community members who share a common vision for a better Culver City. I'm deeply grateful, and to those who did not, I hope that you feel that I always cared for our city and tried to act in the interest of our citizens. I'm very proud of what we have been able to achieve in Culver City during my time in office. We addressed the homeless crisis in a youth department to a modern, highest-quality police organization. We started to run our buses on biogas, the cleanest practical current fuel available, saved the city through proactive measures from wholesale looting during the 2020 riots. We organized Feed Culver. We created, that's the downtown steps and plaza that we all now enjoy almost every week with activities. We also approved the Culver City train station development, which has been a great success. We approved the Move project for better traffic flow for all while keeping a bus bike lane. We built a citywide fiber network that now connects to business and residents throughout the city. No digital divide in our city, and we go throughout to avoid crash going into the creek, and so much more. These successes would not have been possible without the hard work, dedication, and passion of our city staff. I extend my heartfelt thanks to our professional staff in Culver City, and they all been led by City Manager John Nakbar, who is, in my mind, one of the best city managers in Southern California. And City Attorney Heather Baker, Police Chief Jason Sims, and Fire Chief Ken Powell, and especially to you, the people, I have had. As I reflect upon what we have accomplished together, I know there is still challenging with McMoran and Baba Fish to navigate the complicated issues ahead, and I congratulate Dan O'Brien and Freddie Puzo to their expected elevation to mayor and vice mayor. I also want to take this opportunity to thank my wife, who has stood by me and supported me through these years. Without her, it would have been very lonely at times. Thank you all for your trust and confidence. I hope that you will continue to stay in touch. With my greatest sincere gratitude, thank you.
We have a few speakers, and then we have some presentations for Councilmember Erickson. So we'll start with the speakers.
Our first speaker is Dr. Luther Henderson, followed by Lisa Skelly.
Councilman Erickson, I want to thank you very much again for your eight years of service to the City of Culver City. Your service, dedication, and devotion to making Culver City the best that it can be is appreciated.
Is Lisa Skelly, followed by Daniel Park?
Mayor McMoran, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and council members, good evening. My name is Lisa Skelly, and I've been the program director for Grace Diner for the past 15 years. I wanted to speak tonight to thank councilperson Erickson for his service to our community and to recount a brief story of how our paths initially crossed. In late March 2020, I was approached by councilmember, actually, Mayor Erickson and Vice Mayor O'Brien, shut down of everything. Grace Diner already had a commercial kitchen and infrastructure in place. It was an unsettling thought, being around a few hundred people each day in the midst of early COVID, but we agreed. We began receiving restaurant meals paid for by Feed Culver through donations, which enabled several of our city's restaurants to survive. It also allowed Grace Diner to remain open, with lines stretching along Overland and around the corner of Grace Lutheran, filled with people who lost their jobs literally overnight. Thinking and quick action, the diner would not have made it through 2020. Councilmember Erickson not only kept tabs on Feed Culver, but made it a point to check in with me often to see how I was handling everything, and I appreciated those phone calls greatly. He would walk by the church a lot and spend a few minutes talking to the unhoused diners hanging out in our courtyard. They liked him and always bragged to everyone else that they knew the mayor. A lifeline for many of our most vulnerable citizens, providing them with over 800 hot meals, 850 hot meals per week, a connection to much-needed services, and the respect and dignity they deserve.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
We now have some presentations for you.
I think they're going to do that one at another time.
Oh, okay, great. So it's not for tonight. We have the LA County Assessors Office, Ian May and Ted Alquinn. And Councilmember Erickson, would you step into the well, and I'll provide some. Why don't you go up and read it to him?
Come on down. Yeah.
All right. Hey, how you doing?
Doing good.
Maybe.
Is this mic on? Test, test. All right. Good evening, Culversus County Assessors Office, and we're here today to honor the past, present, and future members of Culver City Council. There are many voices in the City of Culver City, but very few can earn the trust and respect of the majority of citizens who voted to have the privilege of sitting on this council, and Councilmember Erickson is one of these distinguished individuals. Men him for his amazing service during those past eight years. So presented in your honor of your service on the Culver City Council, the Assessors Office joins Culver City residents in celebrating your leadership and exemplary service. Your hard work and dedication to the city have left a lasting legacy, making Culver City a more prosperous community than before. Congratulations, and best wishes for continued.
Three, two, one. Right here. Three, two, one. Thank you. Good job. Appreciate it.
Next, we have, let's see, Scott Houston, from the West Basin Water District.
Okay, well, good evening to the City of Culver City, and to the mayor and the council members, and forgive me, I forgot that this is the way you do it, that you put us right up here in front, as we say our, as we say our goodbyes, as well as our welcomes. So I'm Scott Houston. I'm one of the board members of the West Basin Municipal Water District, represent Division 4, which includes Culver City, and to Albert Vera for his reelection to the City Council. But also, the reason I'm here is to provide a proclamation from our board of directors to Yoran Erickson for his service here in Culver City. And I will just mention a couple of things, because I was thinking, so served on a lot of committees, advisory committees, et cetera, et cetera. We know that, the Exchange Club, the Culver City Chamber of Commerce, but there's a group called the Independent Cities Association, ICA, and so a number of the cities in LA Council want to commend you for that, Yoran. And the other, the other thing I wanted to mention, which was brought up, was the fact that, yes, Yoran was serving as mayor in part during the pandemic, and as a regional elected official, and a lot of us monitored what's going on, but I remember getting many emails, of course, from the City of Culver City telling us what's happening, and I think that Yoran did it for that. So with that, I'm going to present your proclamation from the five directors of West Basin Municipal Water District. Thank you so much, Yoran, for your support, your friendship, and your service to this city. Thank you very, very much.
I'm going to have you both to that side. All right. Thank you.
To you, because unfortunately, Congresswoman Sidney Comlaguer-Dove couldn't be here. But it is from United States Congress, a certificate of recognition. District, I extend my heartfelt congratulations to you on the completion of eight dedicated years of service on the Culver City Council. During your tenure, including your leadership as mayor, you have been a steadfast advocate for the community, leaving a lasting impression on Culver City. This milestone recognizes your invaluable contributions to the civic and cultural growth of our region. Congratulations, Sidney Comlaguer-Dove, on the ninth day of December 2024. And then, is there a plaque on the dais? And finally, we have Mayor Mc. And finally, we have Mayor MacMorran and the entire council taking a step down to present to Councilmember Erickson a plaque in recognition of all of his years of service. Councilmember Erickson, it is my duty as the city clerk to inform you that your distinguished term of office has come to an end. Yes, and get your things and... Thank you. Have a seat. Interested? And at this time, we will end Action Item A2. And we will move on to Action Item A3. This is my pleasure to administer the oath of office and present the certificate of election to reelected members, Albert Vera. So I'll ask Puza. Councilmember-elect Fish, come on up. I'm also going to ask that the friends and family who will join you after for the ceremonial penning, they'll be coming up immediately following the presentation of the certificates and the administration of the oath. So, Councilmember Vera. Vera.
I, Albert Vera.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely.
Freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Subscribe this ninth day of December 2024. Signed by myself and Jeremy. Thank you.
I present you with your certificate of the election. Hi! A pin. Do the pin. We'll repin. You want to just use the same pin? Sure.
We recycle here, Jeremy.
Okay. Congratulations. Mayor MacMorran. Fishel, congratulations to you once again. I'm going to read you the oath if you'll raise your right hand.
I can do that.
And repeat after me.
Absolutely.
I.
I, Yasmeen, will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that.
Discharge the duties of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. This is subscribed the ninth day of December. Councilmember again.
All right, here we go.
And while I'm signing, I will ask that your -- oops. I will ask that your friends and family come up here. They're already up here.
Hello. Does she say something now? No. She can if she wants. You want to say something? Yeah. Have her make a quick one minute.
Hi, my name is Madison Yvonne MacMorran Watson. And obviously, I'm this amazing woman's daughter, okay? I'm here to just say I'm very proud of you. And this is very much -- there's nothing on this, okay? Preparing you for something completely different. This is impressive. Everybody on this board is doing something incredible, okay? But I want to shout you out directly, and I just wanted to let you know, I'm very proud of you. And if everybody in the world saw what you were doing right now, there'd be so much more impressive people in City Council. They'd be like, those people are doing something magical, okay? So, thank you.
We need to pin.
Experience. Okay, I got it, you guys, I got it.
Oh, Yasmeen. Here are your documents. I can put them up there if you want.
Thank you.
It's okay, you can put them there. And then finally, we have a new -- Baba Fish? Are you ready to do the oath of office? Great. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Baba Fish. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And as I'm signing, please let me know who will be coming to pin you.
Yes, my parents and my husband and my friend Olga.
Come on up. The entire council come together for a photo op prior to taking your seats. And while that's happening, I will find the name plate.
All right, we'll take a couple. Ready? Three, two, one. This way. Three, two, one.
Hey. Councilmembers, please take your seats on the dais. And we will continue with the election of mayor and vice mayor. Please sit in the same seats. And Baba knows he's taking the seat of Councilmember Erickson, which is now fully and rightfully yours. Now is the opportunity for councilmembers to welcome new members. And prior to doing that, we'll take a new roll call. I wasn't able to do this. Okay, so what we're going to have to do is we'll start with Councilmember Vera.
Present.
Councilmember Puza.
Present.
Councilmember Fish.
Present.
Yay! Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Present.
And Mayor. Okay, so we are now moving. Voice vote. We do have speakers for A3. Do you want to entertain those first or?
Sure.
Do that after?
Yeah.
Okay. So I believe we have eight speakers.
Good evening. Congratulations to all the members of the city council on your election. The people have spoke constitution of the United States and the state of California. We, the people, will hold you accountable based on your oath. I ask the new city council to be cognizant of the fact that Donald J. Trump overwhelmingly the landslide Electoral College and popular vote victory, which included all seven, I'd ask that you reconsider the sanctuary city status. Federal immigration law trumps pardon the pun, state sanctuary law and policy. There is a significant difference between a state and city's decision not to help the feds, which is allowed, that is allowed to do. And I ask the council to reconsider its sanctuary city status and return to lawful status consistent with your oath of office to the United States Constitution. In the attempt to, quote, "Trump-proof," unquote, this city is a fool's errand. For those on the council that may be members of a state bar, I would increase states code. I want to reiterate, I want to congratulate you on your election, and I wish you well. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Basili. Ron, you've been.
Can I hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, first of all, hello, council. I apologize I can't show up in person. It's hard enough for me to get there when my kids are well, and they're unfortunately both sick tonight. You know, we at Protect Culver City have been involved in this campaign on what limited ability we've been able to. And we got to say, his campaign is proof that there is no substitute for a solid ground game. That being said, we are also concerned we've been chasing around a lot of constituents who weren't aware of Baba Fish's plat Akiba Rabbi Zach Shapiro rebuking his association with them. And we're going to be watching this new council and seeing what happens on things that we don't feel that lawsuit against the city for taking down the second, bringing back the second car lane downtown. Is this new council going to be removing it again? Are they going to tell our city attorney not to defend the city in the lawsuit appeal that's happening presently? What's happening to the underpasses at Venice and the 405 and other underpasses? Are we going to take out the fences and allow the -- is this new council going to vote to defund it again? Are we going to, is this new council going to side with people who seem to be obsessed with calling Israel a genocidal apartheid state? We don't know for sure, but we'll be watching. And if council, this new council starts to move on any of these things, we are definitely going to take this to voters and ask them if this is what they really coexist and not touch on the non-negotiables for this city. I wish you the best of luck. And I'll see you when I can see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Elsie, followed by John Erickson.
Good evening. I went to the council. It was a big campaign, and you worked really hard. And what was great was how much you really spoke to people and really wanted to know what was important to Culver City members. And in fact, being on the city council means really representing what the majority of the citizens are wanting. So what's really important, two important things to Culver City residents is the free flow of traffic through downtown Culver City and also safety. In fact, many people moved to Culver City because of the great reputation of the police department. Residents, how important the Move project was. And over 60% said that they did not want that program. So what's concerning is that some people started a suit against the city trying to overturn what the majority of Culver City residents wanted. Also, public safety is very important. In fact, CBS News even reported that the crime rate is up 90% since 2018 and 2019. Concerned is that Councilmember MacMorran voted against every police that in campaigns, in the campaigns of Councilmember Fish and MacMorran, nothing was said about that. And so it's wonderful that there is a change. And so it's wonderful that there is a change of mind about going against the stopping of MOVE project Culver City and McMoran. So we're so encouraged that this will be a turn for the future of Culver City and that, again, the council will work together for what the majority of Culver City residents are hoping for. Thank you so much.
Your next speaker is John Erickson, followed by Chelsea Byers.
Hello, everybody. Mayor John Erickson from the city of West Hollywood. This is a celebration day for all of you up here. Can we give this entire round of applause? Now, I know you would expect me, especially from West Hollywood, to come up here and throw some shade. We gotta gay up your meeting a little bit. I mean, I just gotta say, this is the straightest council meeting I've been at in a long time. But most importantly, what an amazing feat so many of you up here have done. Everyone up here has run for office and you deserve every recognition that you deserve because let me tell you, running for office, it ain't easy. And when people spend a lot of money against you saying the nastiest stuff about you, you have to question your morals, your priorities. And each one of you stayed true to course and while we all may not agree who you are as elected officials, each and every one of you. Because when you stand up for a cause, you stand up for the future. And when I look at my friends up here on the dais, my mayor, my fellow mayor in arms, Mayor McMoran, my dear friend Brian, Bubba Fish, when I said you gotta run for Culver City City Council, I know I don't get a chance to talk to you very much, council member Vera, but it happens in Culver City. What happens in Culver City, happens in West Hollywood. What happens in Culver City and West Hollywood, we'll send them to Santa Monica and then it'll be their problem. Of the day, the most important thing is this West Side stands united here in West Hollywood because, why would I, but I'm here because I love you and you're amazing people. But if you don't wanna take a car, you don't gotta take a car, right? But at the end of the day, we stay true to our united values that community first is where community happens because our cities deserve leaders that answer the call. And you each answered that call and I'm so proud to know all of you. I'm from the city of West Hollywood. They're rainbows, shocker. To everyone that would ever question you or cast out, let the haters hate because you won. Congratulations.
So we don't go too far. We're gonna have to take photos with you, okay? We'll do it. We'll do it later. Thanks. We're gonna call up the LA assessor's office once again. Are they still here? There they are.
Maybe it is their time.
We have a few more speakers after.
Okay.
Yeah. Ken?
Yep, all good. Can you hear me? Great. Good evening. That's a great job. This man has a bright future. Once again, I just wanted to just congratulate the new, the new city council. There's brand new faces, there's brand new perspectives, but the mission remains the same. You guys are each have gotten the respect and trust of your colleagues and constituents of Culver. Half of Los Angeles County Assessor Jeff Prang. We just wanted to celebrate your commitment to public service and civic leadership and our office stands ready to support you in your efforts to guide Culver City towards a brighter, more prosperous future. Congratulations and best wishes in your upcoming term.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Burns, followed by Tristan Esador.
Good evening. My name is Richard Burns. I'm representative of the Western Fish. And all your hard work is paid off. You have a lot of hard choices to make down the road, but as a team, we're positive that the best will come. Thank you very much. Again, appreciate all your hard work.
Anything else that, this is a celebratory moment where we're here to congratulate the new members of the city council, our outgoing wonderful Mayor McMoran for all of the work that she has shown over the next year, over the last year. And to hopefully, and I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but congratulate our new mayor and vice mayor, Mayor soon-to-be O'Brien and Vice Mayor Puzza. I look forward to working with all of you in the school district. I've had the honor of being a part of our community and making sure that we're tackling that collectively. And so I look forward to working with you all in that capacity. I hope to be board president next week, fingers crossed. And so looking forward to working with you in that leadership capacity as well, making sure that we're really bringing meaningful change to our community. And so congratulations, council member Fish. Congratulations on your reelection, council member Vera and Mayor McMoran, and your hopeful appointment, Mayor O'Brien and Vice Mayor Puzza. And so thank you, congratulations. I'm very excited. No one here is gonna steal my joy.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Denise Neal.
Our new mayor, vice mayor, and the community at large. I'd like to say congratulations on your new appointments and you are appreciated and as we move forward, it is my prayer that you guide with wisdom, compassion, and considering our national political climate right now, just to be able to take every step and prayerfully, and I'm a person of faith, so I believe that, and I continue to pull for you. Make the best decisions you can to serve the people. You're appointed by the powers that be of the universe, your higher authority, and just have a good heart. Have a good heart. Remember where you come from and please listen to your people. Help us work our problems out. Some of us are in pain, some of us are in conflict and we really need to be heard and we have so much work ahead of us. But you are valued and Honorable McMoran, I know you have a re-envisioning for law enforcement. We talked, so I understand and I speak to the officers. And you were put in this place to be able to work this out and to continue to work with your current council. So our new, I trust that you're gonna have good decision-making skills and wisdom in everything that you do and please continue to make open forums for us. I don't know what we're gonna do on the day of the inauguration, but if it's possible, can we have a town hall, a community forum, and some type of brainstorming get-together so we can see how we're gonna move forward as a community because we service. Peace and blessings.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for this item.
And now is the time for the election of mayor and vice mayor.
Okay, can we have?
Dan O'Brien as mayor and Vice Mayor Freddie Puzza.
Do we have to take them one at a time or can we do it together?
We can do either. Whichever makes sense to you. I usually do mayor and. Okay, we have a motion by council member Vera, seconded by council member Puzza, to elect. To elect Dan O'Brien as mayor. Please vote. That motion passes. Next, we'll entertain.
I'd like to nominate Freddie Puzza as vice mayor.
Second it.
We have a motion by Mayor O'Brien, seconded by council member Vera, to approve council member Puzza as vice mayor. Please vote. Mayor O'Brien, before we move on, I would love to have you entertain the motion for mayor and vice mayor to serve as the chair and vice chair of the financing authority, housing authority, parking authority successor agency to the redevelopment agency.
May I receive a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Puzza, seconded by council member McMoran. Voted. And that motion passes unanimously as well. At this time, I would like the mayor and vice mayor to come into the well and we will do a ceremonial pinning. If there are members of the family and they wish to come up, they may do so at this time. We will pin the vice mayor first. That's great. Mayor? Sorry. And Mayor, before you go up, we're gonna have you and the vice mayor take a picture together. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor? It's your meeting.
My meeting? It's funny, I wouldn't think I'd have butterflies, but congratulations to our new council members and recently re-elected council members. Like Mayor Erickson said, it's a lot of work to go through that and you can't even imagine if you haven't gone through it. So you got through the gauntlet and I really appreciate everything that you're, Vice Mayor Puzza. I'm really excited to be working with you in the coming year. And I'm also tremendously excited and proud of our staff and to be working with our staff over the next year as mayor. They really work so hard to keep our city working, vibrant, safe, and clean. They do an incredible job like us. They receive a lot of pressure from the public. Finally, I wanna thank my loving wife Beverly. We are truly equal life partners with everything we do, forever and always. And she really does help keep things in balance in our life and in proper perspective, which is important. From the seat, it can be really challenging. I'm gonna be really brief in letting you know that I'm, I really am honored to be your mayor for the coming year, although it's largely ceremonial. Need to make myself accessible to hear your input and concerns and present to celebrate our successes and also to be accountable for the decisions that we make up here. I also feel it's necessary to acknowledge a little bit of an elephant in the room, although not so much. We heard it in some of the comments tonight, how fractured and divisive the community has become. And, you know, I don't think anyone can say otherwise. And I'd like to really try to, you know, have a reset. We're gonna disagree all, you know, all the time. It's gonna happen. But if we're gonna criticize, let's criticize the policy and not the person. Honestly, let's do it. I'm gonna roll out a lot of cliches, you know, disagree without being disagreeable, opposite side of the opinion. Sometimes, sometimes the obstacle is the way. Disagreements, when approached with the right mindset, can lead to a more refined policy that's improved with open debate. In my life, I've always looked to find the silver lining in any dark cloud. I truly look at things with a glass half-full perspective and I hope everyone can join me in making that same attempt. Things that I heard in the campaigns from everyone, modernized, beautiful, functional, and safe parks, playgrounds, and open spaces. Public spaces that are well-lit with trash receptacles that are emptied, landscaping that is well-maintained, and graffiti that is removed. Functional sidewalks and crosswalk, a vibrant and thriving business community. Continuing a compassionate and service-enriched housing program for those in our community who are experiencing homelessness. A responsive, well-trained, and community-focused police and fire department. And a place where anyone of any race, religion, ethnicity, place of birth, sexual orientation, or gender identity, whatever age you are and whatever abilities you have, can thrive and feel welcome. With that spirit, let's take every opportunity as citizens, you don't have to be elected to make a difference. We see it. I'm gonna go off-script a little, but I think of, you know, Jim Shamman with walking rollers. That was, that was done by someone who was just a regular citizen and now it's become a really great thing. We saw Lisa Skelly speak about. We saw Lisa Skelly speak about Feed Culver and Grace Steiner. These are organizations who, when they started, they were done by regular citizens who had no power or authority in our city. I also, I think, Meg Sullivan and Lynn Kutchner here, who live in the Arts District and the hard work that they do to maintain the bike path along the Expo Line, make a difference. So I hope all of us can kind of join hands, lock arms, and do the same thing. And finally, there was a time, not so long ago, after this meeting, each year, we would all get together and have a drink and toast our future success as a city. So I know that there's another party going on. I think Councilmember Fish has got one hosted. To wherever the next party may be, please stop by. And I'd love to, you know, raise a toast to everyone's success. Thank you, everyone. Then, do we have any more?
For items not on the agenda.
If possible, would colleagues be able to make a comment on what just occurred?
Yes.
Is that helpful, Mayor? Thanks.
Please. So I'm going to let Councilmember Fish start.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Congratulations, Mayor. I'm really looking forward to your leadership. And good evening, Culver City. Thank you all for being here tonight to share in this moment. Amazing. Thank you all for being here to share in this moment. It is really a profound honor to serve as your next councilmember. And I'm so, so grateful for the trust that you all put in me. And I want to start by congratulating my colleagues, Councilmembers Yasmin and Monte McMorrin and Councilmember Albert Vera, on their victories. I look forward to working with you, Vice Mayor Puzza and Mayor O'Brien, in the years to come. To Councilmember Erickson, congratulations and thank you and Britta for your dedication to the city and for the sacrifices you made to serve over the past eight years. To my fellow candidates, Denise Renteria, Janine Waznowski-Stalin, and Adrian Gross, thank you for the hard work, passion, and commitment that each of you brought to this race. And to my friend Nancy Barba, I'm so grateful for the campaign that you ran, driven by your experience as a sustainability professional. None of us on this dais got here alone. I owe much to the mentors who paved the way for me, including Mayors Gary Silbiger, Megan Sally Wells, Thomas Small, Alex Fish, and Daniel Lee. And thank you for your example and your friendship. Councilmember McMorrin, your bold leadership and commitment to encouraging young people, myself included, to get more deeply involved in civic life has already made a lasting impact on this city. And Vice Mayor Puzza, as me. It truly took a village to get here. Right-wing and corporate special interest groups spent over $400,000 to stop progress here in Culver City. For weeks, every time I opened my mailbox, I found out something new about me that I never knew before. But we stayed focused on our shared vision of a city with affordable housing, safe streets, and services that meet our needs. And in the end, their money was no match for your people power. To everyone who put up signs, wrote postcards, hosted meet-and-greets, helped us knock nearly 20,000 doors, or even just shared an encouraging word, this was only possible because of your efforts. And a special thank you to D-Sol. Your positivity and your focus made all the difference. To my husband Aaron, this has been the biggest challenge we've ever taken on together. And I simply wouldn't have made it without you. You are my heart and soul. You inspire me to be the best version of myself. And your simple encouragement to "just do good things" keeps me going. To my parents who are with me tonight, anything admirable in me comes from you. Mom, you have responsibilities to take care of one another. And Dad, you instilled in me the value of hard work and perseverance. And you taught me that nothing worth doing comes easy. And you once told me to "have a firm center and soft edges." That stuck with me, and I kept coming back to it this year. So to my friends and neighbors, here is my firm center. I firmly believe that we are lucky to live in a city of immense opportunity. When we were 26-years-old, Aaron and I made Culver City our home. And since then, I've been committed to ensuring others can share in the same opportunities and privileges we've had. Walking every neighborhood in this city during this campaign showed me the hopes and struggles of so many in our community. Young people who are unable to move out of their parents' homes. Seniors worried about making rent. Workers who can't afford to live in the city that they contribute to daily. And lifelong residents questioning if their city still has a place for them. Our diversity is our greatest strength, and yet we're at risk of losing it. That's why addressing our housing crisis must be our priority. Culver City offers walkable neighborhoods, award-winning transit, thousands of jobs, excellent public schools, and a thriving small-business community where more people can share in the opportunities and privileges that we benefit from every day. So in this moment of deep uncertainty as a country, when women, Black, Brown, LGBTQ, and immigrant communities face real threats to their safety, the decisions we make here in this room matter more than ever. I believe to stand firm on our values and create a city where people of all incomes and backgrounds can thrive. And housing is just one piece of that puzzle. Our streets, the largest public space we have, must be safe and accessible to all. The preventable traffic violence we've seen in recent months demands urgent action. And as we face the realities of climate change, we must adopt forward-thinking policies that protect our planet from future generations, for future generations. And to meet the challenges, we will need a city budget that proactively keeps us safe and invests in the services and small businesses that enrich our everyday lives. So on the campaign trail, I heard from many voices that are rarely heard at City Hall. As your councilmember, I'll work to engage more of our when we find new ways to share in its prosperity. Now onto the soft edges. Growing up, my dad and I rarely agreed on politics. Every dinner was like an episode of Hardball. But over time, we learned to turn towards each other, to listen and grow together. That's the spirit I hope to bring to this role. We may not always agree, but my door will always be open. Whether you supported me or not, I am here to listen to you, to learn from you, and to serve everyone in this city. Together, I know we can achieve great things for this wonderful place that we all cherish. Thank you for entrusting me with the responsibility and the honor of a lifetime.
This is weird. Councilmember McMorrin.
Hey. Your trust in 2020, it feels like forever ago. And again, in 2024, for this historic mayorship. I'm sort of excited. This is my first in-person swearing-in. Kind of cool. Would recommend. I want to just do a quick shout-out to the elected guests here. Our Culver City former mayors, Megan Sally Wells and Alex Fish. L.A. former councilmember Mike Bonn and I saw. All of our Culver City Unified Electeds that are present over here. Our WeHo amazing friends and contingent, our mayor, we have Natalia and Dan. I see these exciting new councilmembers elect in this space. I saw Hawthorne Mayor Pro Tem Katrina Manning in the space. She might have had to go, but I'm really grateful for that. And as well, staff from Supervisor Hallie Mitchell, Daniel, and Assessor Jeff Prang's team. I really appreciate y'all's support and being in the space. As well as, I think we have, oh, we have our president of Westside Young Dems in the space as well. So grateful for your presence and your support this evening as well. I'm just going to, this is a big list of Alan Cow, Drexel Heard, and Kat Abbott. We're so grateful for y'all and holding me down and twisting my arm, all the things that you did to have me sitting up here still. I'm very grateful for your support. To all of the friends and volunteers, the old Scott from 2020, who, you know, couldn't stop being on the squad and continuing to lay the groundwork for a progressive Culver City that sees all of us. We're very grateful. To all the unions, organizations, Dem clubs, anyone that has prayed for me, anyone that has knocked a door, filled out a postcard, whatever, we are just so grateful for the support. I would be remiss if I didn't shout-out my fantastic mom and my daughter. We just do so much. So grateful for my family. And y'all, community is the way forward. People power is it. In December 2023, when I became mayor, I shared I am someone who believes that so much more than the status quo is possible. I say it a lot. And I returned to the quote, "That hope is a discipline," by Miriam Kaba, that all members of our Culver City family should be treated with dignity and respect, that we can innovate and lead to meet even our most challenging issues. And that feels very resonant. And so the local level continues to be a space where we can make an impact, deliver a functioning government, and innovate, and see some cool things, and make a little bit of magic. It's absolutely possible. I also want to lift up Kamala Harris's mom always said, "You are the first, but don't be the last." And leadership is a lot about who you are opening doors up to. I am so incredibly proud to be sitting on a dais that not only, that has two openly LGBTQ councilmembers. And for the first time in Culver City history, our first LGBTQ Vice Mayor in our 106, 107-year history. That's amazing. Please give it up. I did for you both. Congratulations again to Councilmember Vera and Mayor O'Brien and everyone who had the courage to run. It is not easy. We see you, and we thank you for your courage and leadership. So I'm grateful to be on the dais with you all. I look forward to the work that we will do to move this beautiful community we all love forward together. Thank you so much for your time.
Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. Forward to the next four years and working, collaborating together. Congratulations, Mayor. Yasmin, congratulations. And congratulations to you, Freddie, on the vice mayorship. I sit here in good hands, so I'm really fortunate and blessed to be serving with you all. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you for placing your trust in me once again. This victory is not just mine. It belongs to all of us, all of us who believe in the future of our city and are willing to work together to make it better. To my campaign team, the volunteers and the supporters, you stood by me through every challenge, every long day. I want to thank my cousin Alice for helping out and instrumental in my campaign. Alice, thank you so much. And even that guy sitting next to you. Candace, thank you so much for your support, your family's support, your love, and help throughout this journey. Many days of walking with you, so I really appreciate it. And Kim, thank you so much for believing in me, supporting me. Thank you so much. And to my daughter, she couldn't be here today. She's chilling under the weather and getting ready for work tomorrow. But baby, thank you so much for your love and support in me always. To my fellow candidates, thank you for your passion and commitment to this community. Campaigns aren't very easy. In fact, they're not easy at all. But the fact that so many voices joined then to everyone, my role is to listen to your concerns, fight for your needs, and ensure that every voice is heard in the decisions that shape our lives. These past four years have been filled with both accomplishments and challenges. Together, we've tackled reducing homelessness. We've created multiple, I think, innovative ideas in terms of our Project Home Key, our Wellness Village, our motel, Mathis City Manager and staff, Aramis and Tevez, for your leadership through this all. You guys are an inspiration, I think, to other cities where they can look at us for examples of what we've done to help our homelessness. We've enhanced our public safety in fostering local small businesses. You know, I ran on, of every community is public safety. If a community doesn't feel safe, then I think businesses suffer. The community suffers, or schools suffers. So I want to thank our partnerships in public safety, Chief Sims, Chief Powell, if you're still here, and the young men and women that we have. Yeah, big hand for dedicated men and women in both organizations, our true inspiration to every city. And I thank you all for your hard work and dedication to this city. As I look ahead to my next term, I'm committed to building affordable housing, working with my colleagues. I'm looking forward to some of your ideas now. And also to continue supporting our partners in public safety, ensuring that they have the tools required and needed to keep our community safe. These goals will require us to collaborate as a community. But meaningful progress only happens when we work together. You know, I always say where we we can only know I'm right, know I'm right, and then nothing gets accomplished. I believe in compromise. I'm looking forward to compromising with my colleagues. And moving forward, you know, we, I think, all have ultimately the same goal. We just have different ways of getting there. I'm looking forward to following the roadmaps of this council to getting, I think, to the vision that we all share for the city. Tonight is a celebration, but tomorrow we get back to work. Oops. The city's strength lies in this people, each and every one of you. And I'm inspired every day by your ideas, your resilience, and your dedication. Thank you again. And thank you to the over 10,000 voters that believed in me and my vision, community, with all of you. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Puzza.
Thanks, Mayor O'Brien. Thank you all for being here tonight. Congrats to Mayor O'Brien on becoming mayor. And I'm deeply honored and humbled to be that believes in progress, equity, and a brighter future for all of us. Our city thrives because of the dedication and collaboration of the people, staff, employees, and its leadership. And I'm committed to upholding this tradition of service. And I, of course, want to express my heartfelt gratitude to all those who live, work, visit, and play in Culver City. Congrats to Councilmember Vera. Tonight, we celebrate your victory and reelection. Your generous spirit is undeniable. And I'm sure your father would be proud of you. Thanks for serving as mayor in 2023. And you represented Culver City well in Iksan, South Korea, South Korea, when we traveled together to our sister city. I look forward to working with you and making this city. Your return represents not just continuity in leadership, but a renewed opportunity to build on the vision and values you strive for, for the past four years. Your leadership reminds us of the importance of leaders who are not just invested in the well-being of our residents right now, but who are committed to creating meaningful change for generations to come by ensuring transparency and accountability and through building equitable systems. Thank you for serving as mayor this past, but my favorite thing was to watch the youth look up to you, especially young girls of color who could see themselves in you. You're a trailblazer, you are relentless in the pursuit of justice and equity, and I look forward to continue to work with you, learn from you and being a partner and creating the most good for all. Congratulations. And it's a great honor to welcome our newest councilmember of Culver City. You worked your tail off. It's a moment for celebration in you, but also the shared vision and hope we all have for our city. As you mentioned, our city is facing critical challenges from housing affordability to sustainability to mobility issues and beyond. These challenges require bold, creative and thoughtful leadership, and now is your time to stand up, Councilmember Fish, and lead. I'm excited to work with you and collaborate with you to create a Culver City that is stronger and more vibrant for everyone. Welcome, a voice that I've always thrived for, sustainability, inclusivity and creativity. Culver City has already taken bold steps toward environmental responsibility, but there's so much more we can do. Our youth are counting on us, and our city can serve as a model for other communities. Culver City's diversity is one of our greatest strengths. We need to continue to build a city where people from all walks of life can thrive, where families can put down roots and where no one is left behind. And as a hub of innovation and progress, Culver City is uniquely positioned to embrace forward-thinking solutions to the challenges we face. I'm committed to making our city a place where ideas flourish and opportunities abound. We need to think beyond the boundaries of the status quo. And as Councilmember McMoran mentioned, my appointment as the first openly LGBTQ-plus vice mayor of Culver City tonight, in light of a political landscape that has used this community as political fodder and as a scapegoat. Growing up, LGBTQ-plus people are told they can't aspire to lead because of who they are or whom they love, that they would always be a supporting character, an accessory or the comic relief. When leadership reflects the diversity of its people, it fosters a sense of belonging. It sends a clear message to that marginalized group that your voice matters, your contributions matter, you matter. So to the youth in our community who may be struggling with their identity or feeling unseen, let this moment remind you that there is space in every room, at every table and in every, identities of being white and cisgender male, and there's so much work to do to dismantle white supremacy culture. I believe that the role of local government is to listen, to lead and to serve, and in that vein, I plan to host several town halls throughout this year to hear from different populations, from faith-based leaders, advocacy groups, business leaders and more. Together, we can tackle the challenges ahead and seize opportunities to continue to build a city we're all proud to call home. So here's to this future of Culver City, strong, vibrant and united.
From the public.
We do.
And the community at large. Bold and taken aback at your willingness to serve, and I just wanted to, as just have an immense pool of talent here in this community, and you're not alone on the dais. So even though on a regular basis, there may only be a handful of people who show up, you have an entire army of people, and just the immense talent in this room alone tonight is just a sample set of what you have access to. So please, remember your public and pull, you have, look at all this bags, and respect your public, honor, you know, your, your seat of service and have us all participate. We admire you, we appreciate you, we laud you and we back you. So with this being said, blessings moving forward, and it's going to be a wild ride.
That was the last speaker.
Do we have any last words from councilmembers? Councilmember Fish?
None on my end, thanks.
Councilmember McMoran.
Is this for our item visit? This is something that we brought up earlier this year, but to revisit the conversation about sort of agenda transparency and just increasing sort of when things will come back so the public has sort of a better idea of time certain items. And I'd like to sort of, Culver City, as it pertains to just increase transparency about when things are agendized, when they might come back, update, it's just more transparency around our agenda and our processes. So hopefully, we can get nodding heads to have that conversation again, hopefully in 2025.
And if you would like to nod your head, please do so verbally. Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Oh, unanimous. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Vera.
Outside of a motion to adjourn, I got nothing else, sir.
Okay.
That okay with Vice Mayor Puzza? Oh, sorry. I just would like to get three, or nodding heads to revisit our sanctuary city policy to make sure it's most up-to-date and that it best protects our most vulnerable in our community and to possibly.
It seems to be unanimous. It's unanimous.
And then also, I just think it's important to listen to the voices of the youth and possibly like to get nodding heads to revisit making Culver City a climate emergency city, including financial costs, tracking our progress and other transparency and accountability measures. I'm not going to close it.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Prior to adjourning, I just want to let the public and everybody know that at the conclusion of business, not tonight, tomorrow night, after the CCUSD board meeting, which will take place here, the Mike Balkman Council Chamber will be closed for renovations of the AV systems. And I want to wish everyone a happy, Culver City Senior Center at 4090 Overland Boulevard. And we'll make that very clear in all of our communications with you, but I just wanted to let everyone know that it's, we're hoping to come back to a new and better chambers.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, seconded by Councilmember McMoran. Done and done.
I'm getting a login error.
Okay, that's fine. You gotcha.
We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, I have some business to do with the councilmembers. Give me two minutes.